The time being seven twenty, I'll call to order the Exbridge Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, the 22nd of February. If we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is that I am the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart.
Okay. Announcements. Chief, are you going to make the presentation on?
Town manager.
Town manager has our.
We have a four citations, and if you would like to read them, they are all similar, but they earn your name, so.
Okay. We have citizen commendations from the Board of Selectmen of the town of Oxbridge. On behalf of the citizens of Oxbridge, hereby awards this commendation to David Bianco, Peter Schenevert, Michael Genest, and Jessica Genest for service rendered to the Exbridge Police and Fire Department on 26 January 2010. On that date, the citizens joined a small group in rescuing the victim of a serious automobile accident. In spite of the risk to themselves, these public-minded individuals approached a burning vehicle, extinguished the flames, and prevented the vehicle from overturning onto its roof until Oxbridge emergency personnel could extract the victim. We, the Board of Selectmen, thank you for your decisiveness. Your prompt and brave actions may have averted a great tragedy. Your conduct is an example for all of your fellow citizens. So, we thank you all, and is David Bianco here? Please come forward. Is Jessica Genest?
No.
Or Michael Genest? Or Peter Schenevert? Okay, we'll send these on to the citizens. We thank you for being here. Thank you very much. Citizens Forum. Mr. Mosko.
Thank you, Mike. I want to speak this evening on the, actually, it's on your agenda, but I just want to comment, seeing I'm not part of the Board, and I don't believe I'll be commenting during that agenda item. There's been a fair amount of discussion that's gone on, at least from the standpoint of the school building committee, or the Board of Selectmen, and the school committee, I've heard regarding the contract for project manager services, the design, build, bid, build project. And it seems to me that everyone seems to be pointing out why they're not getting paid, and are they getting paid, and where are we at the stage? And for some reason, I wanted to go down and at least ask some questions, as I've done some research on the contract. And in looking at the contract, it seems to me that the owner of the contract is the Board of Selectmen, if I'm correct, because it seemed that Kevin, when he was the Chair of the Board, signed this contract on April 13th of '09. Seems to me that the feasibility study portion of the contract is completed, and we have, in fact, incurred the charge of $60,000 that's at that stage, and according to the contract on page 28, we seem to have at least honored that portion of the contract. The issue is, and I've seen Jocelyn and Lesser come back requesting payment, and on and on, and what's going on, and the schedules behind, and obviously, it should be, because on page one, the contract specifies it will not enter the design stage until they receive a pending receipt of a written approval to proceed from the owner, which is the Board of Selectmen ultimately having to take that vote in order for this to enter the design stage. So, it seems to me that we're up to our standard. We've done what we're supposed to do, and all payments are where they should be according to the way the contract's written. But I'm having a little difficulty, because I'm looking at this January 2010 report from Jocelyn and Lesser, and I know there's going to be some discussion on this tonight, but from page 28 of this contract, it seems to me that the project manager was to receive $60,000. And then on page two of this January report, the architect, which is Gene Raymond and Associates, was to receive $120,000 while it was in the feasibility stage. So, a total of $180,000 is really what should be paid to the architect and Jocelyn and Lesser during that period of time. And we have no vote, nor any written authorization to enter schematic design. But what's puzzling here is when I look at this first page, and I look at the $120,000 for the architect fee for the feasibility, and then I look down to the owner, project manager, which his contract says 122,500, which is $60,000 in the feasibility, and 62.5 in the schematic design, but yet, on this report, it shows 133,500, not 122.5. I don't know if that's a typo. I don't know where the other $10,000 came from, who authorized it, on what basis, so I'm concerned about that. Because a schematic design brings 62.5 on the owner's project manager, and 180,000 to the architect. So, there's 242,500 that needs to be paid in the schematic design, for a total of 422,500, of which 500,000, I believe, was voted on at a town meeting for both stages. Question is, why is it 133.5 versus 122.5 when the contract specifies that? One of the things that concerns me, and I guess as we enter this stage, and we keep hearing where we are, and where we ought to go, and what the preferred option is, seems to me, we got into this because there was a NEAS report. I don't know who asked for it. I don't know who brought it forward. I don't know who brought it center stage. That's not that important to me. But the fact of the matter is, this was the driving organization that put us into the position to be looking at building this new high school. And the problem is, it seems lately, we haven't heard much about that NEAS report. We haven't heard where we are, what work has been done, what deficiencies still exist, what monies have been allocated towards what's supposed to be happening there. I would like to see, and I think the community ought to see, an update on what's been done, and we ought to be getting at least a monthly report at this point, whether or not NEAS is important or not. To some, it's not. To some, it is. But perception, I think, is that we ought at least know, if this is what put us into the situation, what's happening, and what are we doing as a result of it. March 3rd, I understand that the MSBA is going to be meeting, and at that point, probably giving an opinion on that preferred option, which is the construction according to the school building committee's vote to move down to the La Valley site and build the new high school. Once again, no matter which way this comes back from the MSBA, I would ask that, and I've asked before, that as each agenda item comes on, that there'd be a thorough report to the community on complete and accurate cost analysis, which is hard to do, not knowing what we're going to build yet, but I think we need to be very careful on how far we go down the line with laying out schematic designs and costs associated with it, if we're really not certain as to where we're going to go yet. But I'd like to see this complete and accurate cost analysis on a district-wide solution. It seems to me that the district-wide solution seems to be getting a lot more attention right now than just the construction of the high school. And I think we need to know what's reimbursable and what's not, and more importantly, what's going to be the tax impact, not only on construction, but operational, as we look years down the road. Perhaps maybe even a more practical look at what renovation and addition might end up costing us, as opposed to side-by-side renovation and addition comparison to the new high school. You know, the reason I'm trying to be extra cautious here is, it seemed eight or nine years ago, where I came to the then Board of Selectmen at the time, and cautioned on releasing the $1.65 million for the plan, that we subsequently, as of this date, we paid almost one, well, we did, we paid $1.65 million. We had to take almost $400-something dollars a year out of this community every single year for four years, and we can't even use the plans. And when you think about that, I all, I keep thinking to myself, we could have done some wonderful things in this community with $1.65 million in terms of some maintenance, and some issues that really were hard-pressed to take care of, but no, we didn't, and we are where we are. So, I just hope that not only do we sharpen the pencil and be very cautious as we move forward, especially in these economic times we're in, and they don't look any too good anytime soon, as we enter the next couple of years, we need to be very careful. And I would hope that this information can be gathered in this NEAS report, whether the principal of the high school, the superintendent of the high school, somebody has to keep bringing this forward, because there may be a more practical solution and not lose accreditation. So, I would ask that perhaps maybe the Board attempt to get that information out, so we can have a closer look. Thank you.
Do you want me to wait to address some of the things you said?
Actually, as part of our agenda item, a little bit later, you're going to address the payment schedule and the various tasks, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else for Citizens Forum? Okay. Town managers' report?
A few items tonight. At the last meeting, I had asked you to set a closing date for charter submissions, and this is pointed out by, during our discussion on the charter, the closing date was set at, for submission of articles at March 15th, the Ides of March. A review of the charter shows that that is not tenable. The reason is...
You're confusing me. This is for the town meeting warrant?
Yes. For, I'm sorry, not charter submission, I should mean warrant submission.
Okay.
I was thinking of the charter when I wrote it. The warrant submissions, it was set at March 15th. The reason it was set on March 15th is that was the Monday following the 60 days. However, a review of the charter shows that the 60-day deadline is hard and fast. We must accept articles submitted up to 60 days, and absent an emergency, a declaration of an emergency by the Board of Selectmen, you can't accept it after 60 days. So, we have to close the warrant on that 60th day prior to town meeting. Unfortunately, that's not a business day at town hall, so we will have to be open that day on a Friday to submit, to accept submissions for the warrant. So, I ask that you reset the closing date to that Friday, and we will simply have someone here to accept them. Another issue, we, as you probably all know, but I don't know if all of the citizens out there know, we will be having a special town meeting. A citizen has submitted a petition with the signature for 200, signatures of 200 registered voters under Mass General Laws and the charter that requires that the town hold a special town meeting within 45 days. Last Tuesday, which is our normal day for holding town meetings, is March 30th, so there will be a special town meeting on March 30th. The subject matter for this is a proposed zone change to allow motocross. There has, this has been an issue before, and the proponent is the former owner of the motocross facility. The supposition is that he would like to reopen it. So, we will be having a special town meeting at that date, and there is discussion later on to open that warrant and allow other articles. Those articles will require 100 signatures, if they are submitted by petition, because this is a special town meeting, not an annual town meeting. We're proceeding with the cable contract issues. The survey is in process. I need to get a license, since this will be done by business reply mail, and that is the next thing that needs to be done. There is a cost to it, and David is going to get me a check for that, so I will be proceeding with that. Bill August is the attorney. I wasn't here when you discussed that. I don't know if it's the feeling of the Board that I need your authorization to proceed with contacting him. I think he would be beneficial.
I don't have an objection.
Well, the cable advisory committee voted to proceed with that.
If that is, I will do so then. We've received a draft contract from, and it's in the REIT file. We received it this week. It is pretty much a standard contract, but I'd like you to look through it and see, from charter. It would be their first submittal. I'd ask that the Board review it quickly, see if you find anything objectionable. It's pretty much plain vanilla, and it's very much drafted in their benefit.
When are the surveys supposed to hit the mailboxes?
Assuming I can get the license and pay the administrative fee within the next week, couple of weeks.
If I could ask one other question. That special town meeting, is there going to be a problem covering the funds for the, are we set on how we're going to pay for that special town meeting, because it wasn't budgeted?
It's about $1,000 to hold it. Kelly hasn't asked for additional funds, but if we need to, we'll go to finance. I mean, $1,000 is not a great deal of money, and given that this is obviously unforeseen, that would be a reasonable request to the Finance Committee if there's a shortage of those funds.
So, the, so there isn't by chance that the individual who is driving this did not give a donation?
Well, it would be a donation, and in any case, it would be the donation, a donation to the town, and would actually have to be directed by town meeting to the clerk's office to defray the expenses. I've sent the prepared list of streetlights to the Board and have forwarded it to BVT, the Blackstone Valley Tribune, for publication. I'd like to see it, set the date for the shut-off about two weeks after it's published, to give people an opportunity to respond and contact the power company. And finally, I was reviewing the Wright's Dairy Farm contract on the 100-acre lot. That was a two-year contract with a one-year option to extend, and in reviewing the contract, they had until December to send us the notice to extend. They didn't do that. I called them, and they have since sent a letter, but it is late. Do you want to waive the deadline?
I personally don't have an objection.
Would a waiver of a deadline conflict anything with Mass General Laws?
No, not in this case.
There's always been a point of contention as to how well they're maintaining that field in the offseason, and keeping the brush cut back, doing other things, planting winter rye, or whatever it is, to keep the erosion down when they're not actively growing corn. How well have they been in compliance with that? Have we monitored it? I mean, getting a...
The experian is sitting in the audience there, because he lives right next door, and he sees it all the time, so. Bernie Ebeling can give you more information than anybody else.
I mean, we need not accept this, or I can simply contact them and ask that, in return for a waiver of the deadline provision, that we seek a contract amendment to require them to...
No, no, I think it's in the existing contract, is it not? They're not required to do anything.
Plant cover? I'm not sure. Let me look at the contract.
Yes, it is.
They are required?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, how well have they been complying with the contract? If they want a renewal of the contract...
This isn't a renewal. We would actually have to bid it this year. There's no provision to extend it beyond this year.
Okay. But if they're not in compliance, or haven't been in compliance with the contract, then is it worthwhile, you know, letting them continue to use the field? It's a question.
Well, it's a question, because if no one uses the field, it will quickly start growing trees and be a burden to the town. But by the same token, when we have an agreement, and one party is supposed to do certain things, we need to make sure they do the things that they contracted to do. So, that's something that we need to look into.
Weren't they the only ones that even answered the RFP last time?
I reviewed the RFP. They were the only submittal.
There are fewer and fewer dairy farms around, fewer and fewer need for corn, a less and less need for corn. The next stage would be, hey, but no matter what we do, it's important that something be done to keep the field from going into forest. It doesn't take long.
Well, I mean, it's a situation where if we say no, then we're going to have to come, as I see it, we're going to have to come up with the town resources to plant something there ourselves to prevent it from going to forest.
Or I would have to reissue the RFP.
Or let it go to waste, like we do with all government, town property, so.
Or I'd have to issue a new RFP almost immediately.
Right. Of course, I'm assuming that no one else is going to answer it, if they were the only ones that answered last time.
You never know, but I mean, you know, every time this has gone out the bid, you know, we've viewed this as very much a win-win situation. Someone's going to pay us $3,500 to maintain our land for us. So, I mean, it's, you know, it's not that bad of a deal for the town. So, what are you looking?
Well, I mean, this is a, this is a contract by the Board. The renewal was not timely, so I'm looking to see if you want me to reject this renewal as not being timely and issue a new RFP, or waive the date, the renewal date, and extend it one more year. In any case, we do need to issue an RFP either immediately or probably in the fall.
For the following year?
For the following year.
My preference would be to let them know we're amenable to renewing it for a year. However, we would like them to document their compliance with the provisions of the contract.
Didn't they not even plant corn this year? Is the corn there this year? I don't even think they planted it. I don't remember the children of the corn this year at soccer.
Stravinsky would certainly know.
I, they didn't even plant it this year.
What did they plant in the 100-acre lot?
They planted it.
It was planted.
Was there corn up there this year? Okay.
They planted the whole thing, it's, they always have.
Just didn't seem to be...
Have they planted a winter cover crop yet?
That's a good question. It's not grown if they planted it. You won't see it till late spring if it is here. Because by that time, all the soil was washed away.
I mean, we did follow up with them, and they did tell.
They said they, they said they were planting it, but...
Put on the pile of corn, and you see it all washed up to stone wall when you get a high down there.
The last date you can put in winter rye, generally considered Thanksgiving, but if you don't really get it in by the first of November, you're pushing your luck.
Okay.
See, in the previous years, when, I think when Visser or Dagmar had it, they would put the winter rye in by helicopter while the corn is still on. So, by the time winter comes, it's already grown, or in the fall, they will hold the soil. That's what they, I've seen that.
I didn't even know you could do that.
Peter, was that a motion, then, that you made?
No, it was just renewed.
Be my guest.
Do we need a motion? Do you want a motion, or just a consensus?
If there's a consensus to waive the provision, then I will tell them that we'll accept this for another year, and then, but we do need to ensure that they comply with the terms, or they won't be permitted to participate in the new RFP.
Just for the record, so we know what we're doing, why don't you just say, without objection, you will notify them that, you know, we'll allow late filing, conditioned upon them filing a documentation of their compliance with the terms of the lease.
I mean, I'll provide a motion, so it's clear.
Okay, go ahead.
Motion to permit a late filing for Wright's Dairy Farm for the 2010 calendar year with the provision that they acknowledge in writing their requirements regarding overseeding?
Compliance with...
Compliance with overseeding.
Went around, did what?
Right, in the offseason.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Anything else on Town Manager's report?
No, that's it.
The correspondence from, I guess, the Labor Relations Board on the SEIU thing?
Oh, yes.
Do we have a date set to deal with that?
Yes, we do, and I'll have to, I'll get it from my office.
And this is because of the change in town hall hours?
Yes.
And the concern about holidays, the fall on the day off, or something?
Oh, this is the one where you get paid for not working?
Yes.
They, the position of the union is that when the, they should still get the same number of holidays, except based on a nine-and-a-half-hour day, and in the case of Wednesday's a eight-to-11 day.
So, this basically increases, increases the number of paid hours off for town hall employees substantially. And we have to go into...
Only those S, not other SEIU members.
Right, but we have to, have to go into discussions with the Labor Relations Board on this?
Well, there is a hearing.
There's a hearing.
There will be a hearing set.
It's going to be here, or somewhere else?
Has it been set? Has a date been set for the hearing?
I'll get the date.
We don't have it yet.
I have a, an email. I can print that out before you leave tonight.
But has a date been set for the hearing?
It has been set.
Okay, fine.
It has been set. I just don't happen to remember exactly what it was.
That's all right, long I know we have a date.
I believe it was the week of March 19th.
Is it here, or somewhere else?
It's somewhere else.
Somewhere else.
Okay, old business. Closing spring annual town meeting warrant. We covered that in Town Manager's report?
Yes.
At your last meeting, you made a motion, you said the date is March 15th.
I just amended that motion.
I might want to revise that.
So, we need a new, a new motion to revise the closing of the spring annual town meeting warrant, and revise it to the 12th of March?
Before we do that, I have a question. Since we're moving it to the 12th, and you had mentioned that it would require, since town hall is closed, it would require an individual to be here, is there a reason we wouldn't move it to the 11th of March?
Because we must accept it to 60 days. Can't accept it after 60 days. It has to be 60 days. And this will occur every year, because simply, although the, the date of town meeting will change each year, no matter what day it falls on, because of the length, there's no changeability in the number of days in the previous two months. no changeability in the number of days in the previous two months, it will always fall on a Friday. So, this will be a yearly issue.
Okay.
Unless we amend the charter and I, this simply isn't important enough to amend the charter for.
So, you're gonna have one employee come in on that Friday?
We'll have to, yes.
Is, have you chosen that employee?
I'm going to ask Tracy and give her a comp day.
Well, that was gonna be my recommendation.
It's usually me and the town clerk, because everything needs to be timestamped in.
Okay.
And redirected to VinCom and stuff.
Obviously, they will be entitled to a comp day if they have to come in or, we may not make it an entire day. The requirement is that we accept it on that day, but we may just open in the afternoon for purposes of accepting warrant articles and whatever time they would earn as comp time would be recompensed.
You're saying it's trivial, but, you know, that's another, you know, comp day, et cetera. At some point, we need to really take a look at that provision of the charter and say, that day or the following Monday.
Right.
Or, you know, whichever comes later.
That day, right, or the closest business day so that we could actually do the fifteen, fifty-ninth day instead of the actual sixtieth day.
Isn't the sixty day a function of when we open the warrant?
No, it's a function of when town meeting is held. Town meeting is, town meeting is set by bylaw, not by charter, but it's on the second Tuesday of May. If you-
Wait a minute, what I'm talking about, this is a special town meeting.
No, no, we're talking about-
This is the spring annual that we're talking about.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
It's like the third or fourth Tuesday.
I thought we were talking about the race.
It's the fourth Tuesday.
It's not the second Tuesday.
May eleventh.
Yes.
Is always the second Tuesday?
And when you count back, it's always gonna be on a Friday.
Right.
But it really only happens twice a year, so.
Yeah, but, I mean, I understand your point. I mean, wouldn't it be easier to write the bylaws so that it doesn't always fall on Friday?
We could amend it, yes.
The next available business day or something, it'd be as simple as that.
Well, that, that's in the charter.
That's in the charter. We could change, we could change the bylaw and have a town meeting on Monday.
Much easier, right.
Well, let's, let's make an amendment to change the bylaw for this spring town meeting.
No, no, what we need is an amendment to change the closing date that we voted the last time. We're changing it from fifteen to the twelfth. So, do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to change the closing date for the spring annual town meeting warrant to the twelfth of March, amending our previous motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, the following discussion was a permanent fix to this as opposed to-
Right, and can we do that, get a bylaw together for our spring town meeting?
Sure.
To change that?
We can do it as a charter amendment or a bylaw.
Well, the bylaw's easier.
That would require that we not have a town meeting on Mondays.
No, can't we change it to sixty, like fifty-nine days?
That's in the charter. If we change town meeting to Monday, the deadline changes to Thursday when we're open.
I have to get rid of the stupid charter. How long have I been saying that?
In defense of the charter, when, when it was written, we were open on Fridays and it made perfect sense to have the deadline on Friday.
Okay, then let's make, let's prepare a warrant article for a charter change on that, I mean, that, it just-
Or the, to say, or the closest business day.
Right, right, just, right, simple language so that it doesn't have to be changed again instead of locking ourselves into a day.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Second.
No, no, to change the charter?
We don't have to do that right now. All we have to draft it first.
Yeah, it's a process.
Right. So, put that on our to-do list.
Okay, Jocelyn Lesser's January report. Do we have anyone to speak to?
They, well, I'm sorry. They were not able to come in this week. They have told me next week, or next meeting, two weeks from now, they will come in. Mr. Remusco raised some good points. If you, if you review this, the number listed is, as the, for the feasibility study schematic design phase, is listed in this report as a hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars, which is not what it says in the contract. That's eleven thousand dollars higher. I don't know if that's a typo. If you follow it down, you'll also see that, this is hard to read with the amount spent-
With a magnifying glass, it's hard to read.
Amount spent to date is a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We have not paid them a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We have paid them sixty because, as, as you know, there is a breakdown in the contract. The first sixty is for feasibility, the feasibility study. The second sixty-two-five is for schematic design. However, there was a timeline associated with that which is no longer operative. The schematic design was supposed to end at the end of February. We were supposed to be almost through with both processes. That didn't happen. There were issues and we are just completing the feasibility study phase. Jocelyn Lesser has not received a payment since the October payment and are, they are eager to get another payment. I don't know if the board would like me to release one. They've been asking for one or two to at least have some sort of good faith payment. I certainly do not want to make any of the last three because we would, at that point, have paid them for feasibility and schematic design and we wouldn't be nearly complete. So, I don't know if you want me to, want to authorize me at this point to make one additional payment or wait another two weeks to speak to them, but they have been clamoring for some good faith payment.
Well, the point is, we would be paying in advance for a service that hasn't been accomplished yet.
Right, and I think that that's reckless.
That's only if we pay all the amounts.
No, right, October, November.
Your question is, your question-
They want a twelve thousand five hundred dollar good faith payment towards the schematic design phase.
But they haven't done it and we haven't entered into it, so therefore, we can't pay it.
But I, I thought some of the amounts owing were related to the feasibility.
No, we have paid the feasibility-
You paid all of that?
The feasibility section is sixty thousand dollars.
Okay.
We have paid them sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, all right.
I thought at our last meeting, we had discussed it. We were gonna wait for them to show up and give us an update before making a decision on that.
Well, the anticipation was going to be that they would be here this week, but they have not, they were not able to attend this week.
And I think we'll get some clarification next week. The meeting's on the third. We will know on the third whether or not it makes sense to proceed into schematic design. And if it does make sense, then the following Monday, we can take that vote to authorize them to move forward.
Right, so I, right, we're on hold.
See, and again, we talked about this briefly last time we met, but the confusion here lies in that it's fixed-price deliverables, but a time materials payment schedule is what it looks like. All it happens to be is installment payments towards those fixed-price deliverables.
Right.
So, and, and they had tied those installments to what they thought the original schedule was gonna be with the MSBA. When this date moved out, it doesn't change the fact that we owe them a precise number X for a certain deliverable.
Right.
So, just because we've already made the payments on a monthly basis, so, we need to have them here and then until we're into schematic design, I'll see how, you know, we can authorize anything further.
Well, they requested that I make the request to the board of selectmen and I've done so.
Okay. Okay. The, the other part of Mr. Remusco's question is what's being done at the school to address the deficiencies? And the estimate is six point two million dollars worth of work to address those deficiencies?
That is in which one of the-
That's-
It's on like the third page of the handout.
Yeah. That's in the long-term projects of existing high school.
Yes, that's provided under the new construction.
Well, yeah, but it's, it's intended to address-
Some of the issues of the existing high school.
The deficiencies at the existing building.
To reuse it as-
As a building. Or to continue using it as a high school with full accreditation would cost six point two million dollars, so.
But why would you do that if you're not gonna use it as a high school?
I think that was, the six point two was-
It fixes the deficiencies that's put us on accreditation issues. So, you spend six two, point two million dollars to fix those issues, NEASC is happy with fixing those issues. We don't have to build anything.
NEASC would be happy if we would just tell them, listen, forget about those deficiencies, they really don't exist. Because remember, they came from us. They didn't come from anybody else.
Understood.
No, I mean, my, being at that meeting, the six point two was in that the MSBA, they were not addressing the NEASC requirements. It was their requirements. They, them saying, wait a minute, you can't tell us your high school's not good enough for your high school kids and then move other kids into it. We have a problem with that. Forget about what the NEASC is saying. We have a problem with that. If you're telling us there's deficiencies in the structural integrity of your building, we don't want you putting any kids in that building unless you fix it.
But there weren't structural issues.
Well, when I say structural, I mean like the HVAC. If you're saying that the, you know, the air quality, you know, not having windows, not having air conditioning is a, is an issue for your Holland kids.
I went to high school and there was no air conditioning in the high school, so that doesn't impress me.
I understand.
But those are all, those are all maintenance issues. And under the, the guidelines for a statement of interest, it's very explicit, you can't not maintain a building and then come to us and say, we need a new building because we haven't, we need to build a new building because we haven't maintained what we have. So, you get into that problem there.
But Carrie correctly encapsulated what-
Yes, she did.
-that number was, which was, if you're gonna build a new building-
Yes.
-before you move middle school kids into the existing building, you need to address these issues for us, not for NEASC.
That's correct.
For us, the MSBA.
Yes.
And then that number was the estimate that Raymond Design and Jocelyn Lesser came up with.
Came up with for the existing building.
But if you do that and make the building so that it meets all the requirements of a high school, then-
Then you can use it as a high school.
That's right.
Right, because-
Which is not what's wanted, so.
Right, because the point that the MSBA was making is that even though the, there are some criteria that is different in a middle school than a high school, there are more overlapping similarities than there were differences.
Yes. Gravity doesn't cease to operate because you move from one school to another.
Moving right along. So, anyway, the consensus is that we've got nothing to pay and we'll talk about it in two weeks and hopefully, we'll decide to move on based on what we hear.
What's the date of our next meeting?
Next week.
But eighth, is that right?
March eighth.
So, it'll be after the March third-
Yeah.
-MSBA hearing as well.
The fifth, you're just meeting at five fifteen.
And aren't we meeting on March first?
March first. At five o'clock.
Yep.
But that's, that's only for the special town meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, shall we move right along?
Yep.
Ansar Energy, Steve?
Good evening, thank you. Steve O'Connell, Andrews Survey and Engineering. Got a couple of folks with me here tonight that would like to speak about this project pursuant to my request to be heard. It's a solar project, which some of you may be aware, there are some incentives at a state level set by the governor's office that I let the folks with me here tonight. There's a representative from Ansar, Karen DeCarteret, and representative from the general contractor who is partnered with Ansar, J.F. White, his name is Mark Caruso. The project is located at the property most people will know as the Bangman's Farm property. About twenty, twenty-three acres they have isolated to implement a photovoltaic program and they'd like to share some details with you and get some feedback from the, from the board and have some dialogue and we won't take up too much of your time. We'd be happy to answer as many questions or as few that you have. Thank you.
Well, I have a question first.
Why are we hearing this?
Why are we here?
Yeah, why are they, why did they come to us?
It's not zoned for a power plant.
Oh, it's not a power plant. It's electrical generation.
That's-
That's power generation.
You read the bylaw, it's an agricultural zone, it's not allowed. I have no objection to it.
No, we'd be happy to answer those questions. I mean-
But there's not, I mean, if, there's nothing for us to do.
Right.
We're not-
Be informed.
Exactly. We're looking to be informed and get some feedback and general support. I will briefly say that there are, there are state, explicit state exemptions that pertain to solar and zoning, regardless of what local zoning allows and does not allow, this project can move forward. There are other requirements that they have to meet that they obviously propose to meet, whether they be conservation or other local permitting that they need to seek through the building code, et cetera. But to address your immediate concern, that's, that's the response, is that there are explicit exemptions for solar.
Okay, but that being the case, if they have a, if they can by right have this facility in agricultural zone, what do you want from us?
Right, then why would we still have any?
We don't need anything. It's called courtesy.
Courtesy is if I can have my supper.
We'd like to have a dialogue. My initial request, Peter, was-
You could have eaten before you come out.
Was a response to the town manager and Mike being the chair, was a letter of support. We've got some letters of support from Senator Kerry, from state representatives.
If you have, if you have the ability as a matter of right to locate in that facility and the owner of the plan, owner of the land is willing to allow you to do that, be my guest. I mean, I'd clap my hand and say, you know, wonderful, wonderful, wonderful.
There's your letter of support, Steve.
The town of Oxbridge is not a private membership club. You don't, we're not a membership committee. We don't say, wow, I don't know, I don't like the color of that sweater, maybe we'll think about, you know, please, you know, I use electricity, we all use electricity.
But, Peter, I would like to be informed. I'm sure the community that's watching has many members that would like to know-
But that's why we have cable access, public access, that you spend all the time they want with everything they want to do, to do a PR presentation. Anyway, go ahead.
That's what we'd like to do.
Please.
Thank you.
Good evening.
I'm Karen DeCarteret.
We're, we're a tough audience.
I guess, ready to run out the door. If I may, I'd like to give you some information on the project.
Thank you.
Basically, this was just an outline of the community impact, the environmental impact, and basically, it outlines the benefits to the town as far as tax revenue is concerned. And the national law exemption that Steve had referred to is chapter forty-eight, section three, and I have a copy of that.
Okay. Sorry, chapter forty?
Chapter forty-eight, section three.
Section what?
Section three.
And basically, what that states is that solar projects may not be prohibited. They can be, you can require a special permit or a site plan review, but you can't prohibit
it unless it's due to, you know, the welfare of the community or whatever.
Please, carry on.
Okay, so basically, what the project is, is under the Green Community Act. This allows companies like ours to go in and set up green projects which, in which we are able to then sell back the power to National Grid or, you know, any of the other Western mass electric. So, basically, the reason for us coming here tonight is to gain support from the board of selectmen. I've been speaking with Mr. Sluzik several times about the project and trying to get some support from the town because we have so many sites. We really feel that the Bangman Farm is a great site for it and it'll give the town the ability to, for basically bragging rights, saying that you're one of the first green communities in Massachusetts. And if you decide to go forward to try to become a green community under the Green Communities Act, that's one step that you can take using our project, which will help you satisfy And if you decide to go forward to try to become a green community under the Green Communities Act, that's one step that you can take using our project, which will help you satisfy the five criteria to become a green community. And if you have any technical questions, Mark is really best to answer those.
I have a dumb technical question. How do you keep two and a half feet of snow from piling up on those solar arrays during the winter months?
Well, most of the, they're at a 37%.
Yeah, the panels are tilted at 37 degrees.
Oh, so they're not horizontal? Okay. I'm sorry, what's a dumb question?
Not really, no, not really.
Because they're warm, too, because they absorb the sun.
What's, is there an additional energy that's used to process the solar energy?
No.
So there...
The, the power is...
This particular site will generate up to three megawatts of power, three and a half megawatts of power DC. From there, it gets converted to AC, which is about an 8% correction, or a total output of 8% of 3.5 megawatts. And that's done with inverters and transformers, and then it ties back into the interconnect.
Can you step up to the mic just so people at home can hear you?
The power, when it's transformed to AC, is, ties into the interconnect, which would be located at Hartford Ave. And it's stepped up into the overhead wires and would run back to the local substation. It would be metered from that point out, so it would be able to determine how much power has been generated.
And what is the, okay, so I guess the voltage is the, the reason why I ask, and I, and before we came on, I had asked anybody on the board if they had seen 60 Minutes on Sunday evening about the power, is it power cells? Did you see, there's a new company coming out of, they're actually doing their big release this Wednesday.
Oh, yeah?
And they, it's a fuel cell project. And the company right now that has both solar panels and the fuel cell at their location is eBay, actually. They have five buildings with the solar panels that only generates about 20% of the electricity in five of these boxes, that one box is about this section of the desk right here. They have five of those on their front lawn, and that brings 80% of their energy by these fuel cells.
Those are the fuel cells? Are they, are they energized by the solar panels?
No, they're not related at all. And the guy at eBay was saying the cost and the space that the solar panels is taking up is tremendous for 20% electricity, when we have these five boxes that look like just oversized air conditioning units are supplying 80% of the energy.
Oh, I understand about fuel cells, though. I think they're batteries?
No, these are, it's a special patent. It was actually very interesting. I don't have a lot of the information. But looking at, I'm just raising, you know, looking at the actual space and the amount of, you know, energy that can be generated out of these. And they said it was 50%, uses 50% less electricity than nuclear. I mean, 50% less fuel than nuclear. So it was, I mean, it's an unbelievable phenomenon that they've, they're coming out with. There's gonna be a big release, like I said, on Wednesday.
Yeah.
They expect one of these in every house by the year 2020, as far as the fuel source. Unless, of course, GE or somebody buys them out and kills the patent, but, you know.
Yeah, I'm just wondering where the energy comes from.
It's, it's a, it's a special patent. They're actually using beach sand as the energy casings.
Really?
Yeah. It was really interesting. You should get the 20, 20 tape. I mean, the 60-minute tape, it was pretty... But I just throw that out there as a, you know, a different form of energy.
Could I ask what you're stepping the power up to transmit at?
13.8 kilovolts.
Okay, so that's, that's a standard transmission line. You're not gonna require any, any tall poles to...
No, well, it'll tie, you're right, it'll tie into existing infrastructure or transmission lines.
So it's, it's just gonna be distributed locally? It's like gonna...
That's correct. Yep, back to the local substation.
What's your anticipated lease on the property for this?
The, the lease payment ranges from $10,000 to $50,000 per acre per year.
No, duration of the...
The duration is for 15 years initially, and then there are three, five-year extensions after that that are available.
How long do these cells last?
They have warranties up from 15 years on.
Because I know, right now, this is only economically feasible because of the subsidies.
That's correct. Yeah, the American Recovery Reinvestment Act will actually pay back the owner 30% if 5% of the work's completed by the end of this calendar year.
I just have the concern that down the road, if these subsidies aren't available, that they won't be replaced and maintained.
Well, it's gonna be part of the RFP process. And that, this is all based on an RFP from National Grid, and it's part of the Massachusetts Green Communities Act that mandates by 20, by the year 2020, 15% of all electrical power in Massachusetts has to be generated by a renewable source.
In-state.
In-state, either solar, wind, or geothermal, or some other type of source that's renewable. So it's, it's in place that, that the revenue is gonna be agreed upon. And by that virtue, the owner's gonna maintain the property and maintain the facility to guarantee revenue.
And actually, we reach grid parity between seven and 10 years, where the note on the equipment itself is paid off within that amount of time. So from that point forward, you know, it's more profitable, obviously.
But that's only because it's being subsidized by you and I who use electricity. None of these green things make economic sense. That's why they paint them green and take taxpayers' money to run them. So mass electric and electric companies are charging all of us more money to generate expensive power, just to look like we're doing something nice. But, be my guest.
Not you particularly, everyone.
That includes me. And me is near and dear to my heart.
The amount is less than $1 per month that the ratepayer will be paying for seven years. And then between seven and 10 years, our project actually brings the rate down.
Yes, $1 a month for you, $1 a month for wood thing, $1 a month for ethanol and schmethanol and all those things. I'm $1 a month to death.
But, Peter, it makes Al Gore happy.
Seven years?
Seven.
Yeah, then it's, then you get your dollar back, and...
I'm just curious. I know, for example, they're talking about decommissioning Vermont Yankee, and they have a requirement to disassemble the, the plant and restore the site. Is there any such requirement if in 15 years, when your, your equipment reaches its useful lifetime, that you...
I would believe that would be part of, that would be part of the permitting process. I've seen language to that extent, where it's required that it be removed, or if the, if the site is abandoned for a year, that it would then be considered decommissioned and be removed within 180 days or a calendar year, things of that nature.
Does the efficiency of the panels decrease over time?
It does, yeah. It does. But the RFP calls for the, the efficiency to not ever get less than 80% over time. And chances are, and I'm speaking on behalf of the owner, and what I would think would be economically feasible to them, they'll wanna maintain that high end of it. You know, if they gotta replace panels, or they got newer technology, go in there and swap them out, generate more power.
So is the intent that we send a letter of support to Ansar, or to the Department of Energy Resources?
Preferably to the Department of Energy Resources to fill GDC.
Okay.
I can provide you, I can email you copies of letters that we've received today.
We have a couple.
Steve's already done that.
Examples.
That is a good question. Does it provide any permanent jobs in Uxbridge?
It won't provide permanent jobs in Uxbridge, but what it will do is you'll have related jobs during the construction phase. So you'll have induced labor. Right, they do go away, but it is an influx of, of income, you know, for the town.
Will our electricity-paying residents in the town have any increases to their electric bills because of this being in town?
No, not, no, it's, it's across the whole National Grid, that everybody would see a slight increase in their bill.
We're paying for all of these things everywhere.
I understand. I just wanna make sure that it's not, you know...
Uxbridge-specific.
Exactly. That Uxbridge all of a sudden sees a $20 per household increase because of this sitting in our backyard.
What is the utility to you of a statement of interest?
I'm sorry, I don't...
What is the utility to your organization of a statement of interest from us?
Statement of support, you mean?
Yeah, I, I'm, right, I, I'm with Peter. I mean, I don't, this is a...
You have all these letters from the, from the emperor, from the president, from the loose threats. Why do you need a letter from us?
If you've cut a deal with the landowner and it's their property and...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. But basically, the Department of Energy Resources and the, and the DPU, which regulates this, wants to see that the towns want the project. So whether you look at it from the tax revenue that you'll be receiving, you can probably guarantee somewhere between 20 and 30% of the total lease payment per year.
So on the one, on the one hand, we have a state law that says, forget about zoning.
You have to have it.
Okay? And on the other hand, the same state government is saying, well, we wanna know if the towns want it. If they want that information from us, why did they adopt that provision of the law?
Well, that was adopted separately from...
Yeah, I know that.
The RFP process.
This is like 40B for power generation. I mean, they can do whatever they wanna do. But what's in it for us is the, the increased tax revenue on the value of the solar panels.
Yes.
Right?
Which will be offset by what we're already paying and have been paying in increased electricity costs.
Is the monies that we're collecting off that property, is the solar, is the taxes higher with the solar panels? Or could we actually be taking a decrease in the tax value of that property?
If it's agricultural land, we'll see an increase.
We're gonna see, okay. Just, just asking the question. So we're gonna see an increase in the property?
We see very little revenue on agricultural land.
I guess one thing that strikes me is the exemplars that are given here kind of filled with effusiveness and hyperbole. And whoever signs it probably won't understand what it is they're signing.
We can draft them around.
We can draft them around. Okay.
I like the, the governor, the nice governor, says that he wants 15% of utilities, energy production must come from in-state renewable sources by the year 2020, of course, which is always after the government's... Same language used in reducing the deficit, right? I guarantee, I'm gonna reduce the deficit 10 years after my term.
But wouldn't it have the same effect if we increase the size of the dairy herds and capture the methane? And use that for energy generation?
Actually, there isn't any dairy here, herd dairy anymore.
Can I ask another question? Are you gonna ask for a piss action for the financing?
No.
Their financing, we're financing already.
Well, yeah, but Bagramzne...
Yeah, I know, I know, yeah.
Yeah, but Bagramzne, the, the owners of the property.
That's a question that should be asked.
People can ask all they want.
Okay, thank you. Well, 'cause they're talking about how this could generate additional revenue, and then if they come back and ask...
Okay, so do we have a motion of support for the project?
Before we go in there, so the monthly lease payment is approximately how much?
It's a yearly.
A yearly lease, okay.
It's between $10,000 and $15,000 per usable acre per year.
And there's 20...
23.3.
23 acres.
23.3.
So you're looking at a quarter million dollars a year lease, roughly. And we should expect to see, you said roughly 20% of that amount would...
No, 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 no. The lease has nothing to do with the tax revenue with the town.
It does, it does. Because the, the lease payment is a gross lease payment. And because there's no precedent yet as far as how, how these things are taxed, it's really gonna be between your town, you know, your assessor, and the landowner, as well as Ansar.
The photo cells are business property which gets tax for excise tax, do they not?
Right, they're not, they're not really sure yet, just because none of these projects have actually been implemented.
So, under that theory, we could end up not getting any additional tax, depending on what mass general law comes up and it doesn't allow us to tax or tax.
That's...
I mean, if it hasn't, if there's no precedent setting that we actually have money in our hands...
It's business equipment. Excise tax is applied to business equipment.
But they could exempt it, though.
But the...
Our legislature would take money away from us? Come on.
The owner of the business would not allow that to happen. There would be a split for the town because he wants the town to be happy with the project.
But if he doesn't have to have our permission, then it doesn't matter.
But you do have, we do have to have your permission. We do. We would not come into the town if, if you were opposed to the project. We would not come into the town. We would choose another town.
Good. We won't give you permission. You go away, and then I'll go to the electric company and say, hey, I'll put up the panels, and I don't, won't ask permission of the town. And I would.
And he would.
You've got quite a bit of land.
Not enough.
Not enough.
Besides, I wanna walk on my land. I don't wanna walk on the solar.
Only because I'm putting in a photovoltaic system on my home right now, as a fact.
You're getting it up to the 2, Harry?
Well, no, no, no.
No, but he's gonna get tax breaks, though.
I'll take it if you wanna bring it. But the tax laws, I don't know if they're any different from municipalities than they are for individuals. But I know the tax law is such that for 20 years, they can increase an assessment on my home because of the system, because it falls under the credit and the renewable energy. So, in other words, there is no increased revenue because I'm making my house more efficient and worth more, but the town can't assess it for 20 years. So I don't know how that pertains to municipalities, but there may be something a little different for communities, but that's the way it works for individuals.
Well, but, but Harry, if I'm not mistaken, they can't increase the assessment of your home based upon the presence of
That system.
The panels.
Right.
But natural appreciation of your home would, would not be any different than anybody else's home.
Well, exactly, exactly. But because of the fact...
They couldn't inflate the appreciation of your home because of the presence of the panels.
Because I have to come down, I had to come down and get a building permit. It was $126 to get a building permit to put the system on. But now, if the assessors come in and take pictures, say, oh, that system's on, this house is worth $75,000 more, so let's get $75,000 more in tax revenue. Can't do that for 20 years. That's the way the law reads. And they can't charge any sales tax on all the equipment as well, and that's, that's exempt from the act as well.
Well, and, and that's, and I think that, that's my concern, is that we're not going to get an additional tax benefit from this.
We need an accountant to give you, or you need somebody that's really...
But, but if it's not costing the town anything to put in, any revenues we get are nice to have, right?
I understand that, but to give the presentation to think that we're maybe getting several hundred thousand and we're not getting that, you understand what I'm saying?
I understand.
Right, it's not our property, but to give the presentation that we could be getting several hundred thousand dollars a year may not be accurate, because it's one of the reasons why businesses go solar and go for these energy green is because they do get federal and state...
Right, 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 right.
Exactly.
For, for construction, right? Yeah, that's for construction. I don't know if that would apply, how that would apply as a business venture.
Well, I mean, there's, I mean, there's gotta be a reason.
There's no separate tax question.
There's no separate tax, right. But, you know, there, there has to be a benefit for these businesses to doing the initial outlay.
Yes, it's pleasing to Al Gore.
And there's more than just that.
Our companies are obligated to have certain percentage from renewable sources.
Right.
So they go on to make these deals, the best deal they can, but they still have to do, they have to meet that criteria. And that's built into the rate that all of us pay.
I can tell you from experience, some of the things recently legislation that has taken place, and correct me if, if I'm wrong, I think as of December 1st, state legislation required that National Grid or other companies purchase the electricity back at retail. I mean, that's a huge, you know, huge step that was taken. I mean, all of a sudden, you've got, that, you know, they're charged, they're paying 3 cents a kilowatt hour, now they're gonna pay you 18. And so that, that's a huge incentive alone. And then they established the Renewable Energy Credits, RECS. I believe they're $60 per installation. So I've seen situations where companies are going, they're knocking on doors and say, hey, you know, we'll, we'll sign a contract with you for, for your electricity rate for 15 or 20 years. for your electricity rate for fifteen or twenty years. If you let us put these panels on your roof, we'll maintain them, we'll have a contract." And the people have a peace of mind that know that they're gonna pay, you know, ten cents a kilowatt hour for twenty years. It, you know, it's a risk that they take. It's kinda like the invitations we all get about for locking in the electricity prices from other companies like Dominion and things of that. So there's a peace of mind of, of knowing that you're gonna pay a certain amount of electricity for twenty years. But these companies who are going on, knocking on door to door, if they get twenty or fifty or a hundred households to sign up, they get six hundred dollars in renewable, renewable energy credits. Is that a per year, or is that a one time?
I think it's a one time.
It's a one time. So from business venture, there are a lot more incentives that just came into play in the last several months, and they get worth their while. Now, to address your concern about taxes, I mean, I, I believe we'll look into the obligation or the ability for the town to receive taxes, but I believe what they're telling you tonight is they're making a, you know, a commitment to having that, that, you know, sharing that revenue in, in what they outline in their report. So I know you're concerned about their obligation, but they're telling you that they will.
Well, can we negotiate a pilot, a payment lieu of taxes agreement for this site?
I would not, I, I would not be in favor of that. It's, you know, the owner of the property has the absolute right to maximize the use of his property in every lawful way. This apparently is a lawful way. So I'm not gonna hold up the owner. You know, it's like saying, any business, we want you to pay us money. But keep in mind, it, it's wonderful for the recipient that the power company has to buy the power at retail. But where does a power company get the money to pay them? From you and I, businesses do not pay taxes. Taxes are always paid by the consumer. The business is just the middleman. So we are paying Mast Electric Retail so they can turn around and give these people those retail payments.
I mean, there's a bigger picture. I mean, it's, it's, I guess it depends on where you stand on renewable energy resources. I mean, if we can get fifteen percent of our electricity from renewable resources, then that's fifteen percent less we're using from fossil fuels, fuels and other resources.
I'm perfectly happy
So obviously, that comes at a cost.
Getting my fuel from fossil fuels.
But that's exact, so that's where you stand. I, I respect that completely, and but it's, everything comes at a cost, and there are people who, you know, will step up and take advantage of certain opportunities.
Nothing wrong with that.
Like good, good business ventures do, and...
Nothing wrong with that.
Exactly.
Speaking of stepping up, are there any communities that have, you've made the same proposal to, that are on board with it?
Yes. Bellinham, Sutton, Sturbridge, Spencer, Westminster, Hubbardston, we've been to...
So that's the list, I would say, you have of...
Have you broken ground anywhere yet? Broken ground?
No.
No, no, it's actually, let me clarify that a little bit. It's, it's a, it's a proposal that went in. There's gonna be other, other ventures that are going after the same type of work as well. All right? So what we have to do now is, we have to wait while this proposal gets reviewed. We'll know sometime in early May whether or not our group has been shortlisted, and then if we...
Proposal to National Grid?
To National Grid, correct. And if we are able to negotiate a contract with them at that point, we're probably looking at a fully executed contract sometime in the middle of July.
And your proposal includes not particular towns, but a group of towns?
No, it actually...
A group of generating, generating capacity?
It, it includes specific sites. Like, for, for example, for, for Uxbridge, we already put in an interconnect application to National Grid, invested twenty-five hundred dollars just to get the ball rolling
Yeah.
With this community.
Okay.
On your map, you have Uxbridge times two. So you have another site in mind besides the Bagma Farm and our...
There is another site on Millville Road that we have under a letter of intent. I don't know that we've done any more than that. We have a, we have a plan.
How about the Hundred Acre Lot? There's, there's a drawing developed on that. How about the Hundred Acre Lot? What's wrong with that?
The, um, part of, part of the...
We were talking about that.
Bigger is, bigger is always better. So Hundred Acre Lot may generate too much power. It may not be able to tie back into the substate.
You don't have to utilize the entire lot.
Oh, no. I, I understand that. I understand that.
Right, you can't have a soccer field.
But if you pay more than thirty-five hundred a year for the area that's covered with corn right now, you can guarantee to maintain it. We can work something out.
I'm serious.
We don't have to worry about the overseeding, then.
You could have both, wind and, and so.
I don't know if there's distribution up there.
Yeah, the distribution is available, sure.
Yeah, National Grid has got stuff to go through.
Thirteen thousand volts is what, that's what I have going down to my house.
So, anyway, do we have a motion to support the project?
Has there been any towns that have turned you down?
No.
I, I don't know what that means, to support the project.
Do we have a, a motion to send a letter to renewable energy?
That's what I mean. I wanna see the letter first, before I'm signing on. I, I've been stunned
That's true.
Already by the letter of support we sent for the rodeo, and now it comes back to us in the fact of, you know, when they go to the ZBA, "Look, we have the letter of support from the Board of Selectmen, and all we said was that we have no objection to the thing." You know, "But it doesn't, it's not allowed by zoning," and we see what happened there, so...
Yeah, but we didn't draft that letter. They can write whatever they wanna write.
No, it was a letter from the Board of Selectmen
Oh, we did write it.
Supporting in principle the idea of the rodeo. Now, if somebody wants to construe that as, as our coercing the ZBA into doing something, then I really don't think the ZBA is coercible
Right, right, yeah.
Over a letter that's signed by the Board of Selectmen.
It's not a question of coercing, it's just, you look at the letter and say, "Oh, boy."
You know.
But anyway, more on that later.
So anyway, we...
I won't vote on a letter of support until I first see the letter.
Okay. No, no, we'll craft a letter and we'll put it on our next agenda and see.
Well, that, that's just my opinion. I'm, I'm only one out of four, five members.
I, I think that's reasonable.
Okay. We have a consensus that we'll draft something up and we'll look at it next time.
Have it on our next agenda.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But take another look at the Hundred Acre Lot.
Point of clarification.
That's the condition?
We have a...
By next agenda, you mean the next regular meeting or the special meeting?
I don't think there'll be a full board at that special meeting.
Next regular meeting on the, the fifth, is it, or the eighth?
The eighth.
The eighth, for our next meeting?
The eighth.
The eighth.
Fifteenth, twenty-second.
Okay.
We're meeting way too many times in March. We're meeting the first, the eighth, the fifteenth to twenty-second, and the thirtieth.
They got John Kerry and Paul Kojel.
Without mentioning what's going on with this specifically, this Green Power Act is a disaster. Because we have a, we have a New England power market, and this is, flies in the face of the concept. Acquiring Massachusetts Purdue's energy.
Okay, spring annual town meeting procedures. These are discussions that we held in reviewing the requirements of the charter as to who can put articles on a warrant.
That, there's no question about that, is there?
Well, we have had previous warrants with articles ascribed to individuals that did not have authorization to put articles on the warrant.
The, the Board of Selectmen creates the warrant.
Correct.
Under the charter, the Board of Selectmen is obligated to put on a warrant articles submitted by multiple member bodies
Correct.
Or elected officers?
Right.
Okay, of which there were very few. The Board of Selectmen is free to put any other article it wants on the warrant.
Hmm, that's a matter of interpretation.
No, it isn't. It isn't. It's very clear.
But they are selectmen's articles. They're not the water department's articles.
They, they can be a water, an article submitted by the water department, placed on a warrant by vote of the Board of Selectmen.
But the warrant will reflect the article is a Board of Selectmen article.
That's okay, either way.
Not either way.
There, there's nothing in the charter that says how an article has to be titled on a warrant. There isn't.
I guess I'm confused. So is the objection...
We have had, we have had articles where the sponsor was
The town manager.
The chief of police, the head of the water department
The town manager.
Or the town manager. When they should be, the chief of police should come before this board and ask this board to put an article on the warrant.
Which, which he does.
Which he does, because if we don't vote for it to go on, then it wouldn't go on. So when we vote...
He'd vote for it without the chief of police coming here and saying, "Would you kindly put this on the warrant?"
I mean, the warrant's pretty clear on this.
How does it come to us?
Through the town manager.
The warrant's pretty clear on this. I mean, the, the Board of Selectmen shall include, on the warrant for annual town meetings, subject matter of all petitions which have been received by, you know, sixty or more days before, blah, 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 okay? Shall not include in any such warrant, subject matter of any petition which has been received by it after said date, okay? So it, it directs us what we, we shall, which is obligatory, include. It's silent on what we may include.
Therefore, we may include anything we want
It's out of discretion.
Because we, it's our warrant. That's the state law.
I mean, I think it's getting, I don't know, I think it's just... I don't see what has been injured by the, you know, who's been injured by the process and the way that it's gone.
It's not a question of being injured. It, it's helpful, because if you see an article, and it, if they all say by the Board of Selectmen, unless it's a petition article, if it's said by the police chief or the highway department or something, then if you have a question, you know where to go and say, "Gee, tell me more about this," rather than coming to the Board of Selectmen saying, "What's this article?" "Gee, I don't know. We put it on at the request of so-and-so."
I suppose the way to address that is to say, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen at the request of whoever the...
You could do that if you wanna add words.
The fact that it's, it's on the warrant to be voted on by the town says that it's been placed there by the Board of Selectmen. So other than petition articles, we have full discretion as to whether or not we're gonna place anything on it.
Well, petition articles and multiple member bodies and so forth, yeah.
Right.
And then once it comes to us, the only, my understanding is the only, the only ones we cannot change are the petition articles. We can't change those. But like, for instance, if the police chief bring, and I think we did this last time, didn't the police, was it the police chief that brought us the warrant article, and we didn't like the way it was phrased, so we changed it?
Yeah, we can change it.
Because we had that complete discussion.
It is back our...
Right, we had the right to change it.
Theoretically, if we get an article from, by majority vote of a multiple member body, we should put it on as it is.
Right.
The motion made may be different, either by, by anyone who makes the motion or anyone who wants to amend the motion, but...
What's your concern?
What is my concern? Sort of the purity of the process, not having articles that are sort of dangling out there with people wondering, "Why is this person putting an article on the warrant when they don't have a right under the charter to put a article on the warrant?"
They don't have a guaranteed right under the charter.
They don't have a guaranteed right under the charter, correct.
Well, but then is it sufficient, as Peter suggested, to add more words?
That wasn't my suggestion, but there's nothing wrong with observation.
Yeah, you're, I'm sorry, you're right. Don't mean to put words in your mouth.
What's the pleasure of the boards?
The charter speaks for itself.
But then, the idea is to take the charter literally, and the police chief does not put articles on the warrant.
Well, actually, no, it says
Go ahead.
Yeah, right from the charter, that we shall receive any, at any time, petitions addressed to us, which requests the submission of a matter to the town meeting, which are filed by any elected town officer. Okay? Or there is elected, though, which is kinda interesting, because town officer is defined as a person having charge of an office or a department.
Or even an elected.
But it conflicts with elected there, which, you know...
But elected is specific.
Right, right. So there are very few department heads that, that are elected.
That's correct.
Town moderator.
That's correct.
Technically.
Who are they?
Is it town clerk?
No.
Moderator?
Yeah, town, town moderator.
Clerk's appointed.
Huh?
The clerk's appointed.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay, so some, just the moderator?
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Just the moderator.
Just the moderator, okay.
Okay, so how about for this warrant?
For, for editorial purposes, we could put, you know, BOS in parentheses, and then whoever requested, because I think it serves a useful purpose if some department or somebody specifically wants a warrant and we act, article, and we acquiesce, to let people know the source of the article.
See, I agree with you, Peter. I think the public is better served by having parenthetically who requested the article than just saying, "All articles are Board of Selectmen articles."
Yeah.
Right.
Because by definition, we put them on unless it falls into one of those three categories, petition, department head.
Well, they go on because we voted to put them on.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Because they, if we don't vote, they don't go on there.
That is correct. So is the interpretation is that by virtue of our voting to put them on the warrant, they become Board of Selectmen endorsed?
Not necessarily.
No, because the ones from the elected officials...
The board has voted to put articles on the warrant at the request of a department head or somebody. Even though we were ambivalent as to its support, we said, "Well, it, you know, it deserves a hearing. We'll put it on the warrant."
Well, I mean, we, we have also put articles on, and we have voted unfavorable. I mean, that's why there's, there's those lines. I mean, right, I mean, they wouldn't ask our opinion on it.
The sense of the board is that we're not going to tighten up the process for warrant articles.
I mean, I, I wouldn't object to clarification in the warrant, you know, Board of Selectmen on request from chief of police, or by request. The fact of the matter is, you know, those types of articles are by his request, so...
I mean, I think the question you're asking is, is if the chief of police comes to, let me ask it this way, is in the history of the BOS, have we ever been presented with a department head's article and not put it on a warrant?
Yes.
Okay.
In my, in my tenure, yes.
Yes, okay.
Not often, but yes. He said, "No, you know, we don't want this..."
So I don't think we should, you know, I'm not...
It's not on a map.
I think that we should be, right, exactly. We should be allowed that ability to say no.
Yeah, actually, I remember an article not too many years ago that the former town planner had submitted to this board, and we just had a very similar article at a prior town meeting, and, and we voted not to include that on, on the warrant. So that's an example just fairly recent that, that we did that. You're smiling, Mike.
No, no, I'm not smiling, I'm grimacing.
Looks like a happy grimace to me. You wanna see my grimace? There's no doubt.
Okay, so the sense of the board is that we will not tighten proceedings. Okay. Discussion of special town meeting procedures. What procedures?
What was that?
Well, I think right now, this evening, I think what they need to do is open the special town meeting warrant.
Oh, you mean in...
That went in the paper today.
For the, you, you mean a discussion of the specific special town meeting?
Yeah.
For the zone change. Yes, you, you need to open the special town meeting warrant.
Okay, but wait a minute, the, the antecedent requirement is to discuss the procedures.
Okay.
So what are the procedures we're discussing?
Well, the intention of that's on to discuss today's warrant. Because of the time constraints, and I believe I sent everyone an email on, on the very tight timeline we have for this. We have but forty-five days from the date we received the petition.
Now, procedurally, you mentioned earlier that any additional articles to go on that have to have a hundred signatures?
Because if they...
Petition articles.
Any petition articles need a hundred signatures, since this is a special town meeting warrant.
Okay.
Annual town meetings require only ten, but special... Annual town meetings require only ten, but specials require a hundred.
Okay.
So, an article that, that someone wishes to put on by petition may be very difficult to gather the signatures for, because this is a short timeframe. I suppose they could also submit it to the board and, and you could sponsor it at, at another party's request, even if it's not a town governmental.
Let's not open that door.
Let's not go there.
And I would discourage.
Erase that evidence tape.
Well...
No.
I mean, there's, there's nothing, I suppose, I, I come from a community, we never did petition articles, or very rarely. Everything went through the board and was approved or not.
Okay, so what we need tonight is a motion to open
To open.
The warrant for the special town meeting.
Yes, it must...
To be held on the thirtieth of March.
It must remain open for
Forty-five days.
A minimum of five business days.
Five days?
For the special, yes.
Okay.
We only have forty-five to actually
Okay.
Hold the meeting.
Okay.
So, just to recap, your email to us, forty-five days of receipt of the petition. Petition was received on Tuesday, February sixteenth.
Correct.
Meeting must occur by Friday, April second.
But that is a Friday. It's a difficult day to get people out, so...
Difficult to obtain a quorum on a Friday, so we have tentatively scheduled the meeting for Tuesday, March...
That's the spring, spring annual.
Thirtieth.
No, March thirtieth is the...
Special.
Is the special.
March thirtieth, okay. So then, your email goes on...
Working backwards, we have.
Application of notice in the TNG would be February twenty-second.
Yeah.
Today, today we open the warrant. You're suggesting that we close and sign the warrant on March first.
Correct, a week from today.
Special meeting. Warrant will be posted on the second. And then, FinCom hearing will be scheduled.
FinCom has to schedule a meeting. As soon as they're done with their hearing, you'll need to set, there's...
The planning board roughly on the tenth?
Yeah, and tentatively, there's a date, I think for the fifteenth, for this board to hear the article and then publish it the next day to make the two-week publication, posting deadline for the, for the warrant.
And then, the sixteenth annotated warrant with comments and recommendations?
To be posted.
To be posted in the actual meeting on the thirtieth?
Yeah.
As your, as your recommended schedule?
We'll post the draft warrant with, with, which will be complete, but will not have the annotations and votes on it. We'll prepare the final warrant as soon as this committee hears the, has the hearing.
Well, actually, on the sixteenth, I think we'll be able to, after you guys meet on the fifteenth, on the sixteenth, the warrant should be finalized with the planning board recommendation and the board of selecting recommendation, if it all closes on the fifteenth that night. And then, it could be a complete packet.
It'll be, all Tracy will have to do is, is add your vote.
We can do a work in progress, like while we're here.
You, you can add that vote that night and sign it, and it'll be posted the next day.
Okay, so... We're meeting the first of March to close and sign the warrant.
Correct.
We're meeting on the fifteenth to hold a hearing on the warrant.
Public hearing.
The public hearing and vote whether to support or, or not support the article.
Okay.
Or articles.
Then on the thirtieth will be the actual special town meeting.
Yes.
Public hearing. What public hearing are you referencing?
Um, there'll be a planning board public hearing.
Right, okay.
And what we did was, because it's, um, it's going to be a hot topic, we've piggybacked off the planning board public hearing notice to save money and also allow this board to have a public hearing with the residents in this community, so they know what's going on.
It's a different day, though.
But we don't have, we don't have public hearings on the warrant.
You don't, you wouldn't on a zoning, but this is as courtesy, because we're ta, we're piggybacking off the planning board's, um, um, public hearing notice, because you will have to provide a recommendation for the warrant.
We make recommendations, yes, but we don't typically have public hearings.
You don't have to, correct. In this instance, it was a freebie, so we're going to have a public hearing.
Well, you don't have to do as a, a hearing.
You don't have to open it as an official public hearing.
But if it's advertised as a public hearing?
Yes, it is.
Then that's done already?
Yeah, and in the last couple of zoning amendments, you have done public hearings.
Well, we, we had to get the add-in today.
The last couple of years, or the last couple of meetings, you have had public hearings.
We had to get the add-in today or to make all of the timelines. Unfortunately, the charter has a list of events that must normally happen before a town meeting, and they follow one after the other, including finance committee meetings, publications. The state law says forty-five days from receipt of the petition, and that just compresses everything. So it really tightens up our deadlines and makes it very difficult to get everything done in that short timeframe.
All right, I'll make a motion then, that we open the warrant for the special town meeting to be held on March thirtieth, twenty-ten, with the warrant to be closed, close of business as our tradition?
Close of business.
Close of business on March first, twenty-ten.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Sutton Street lease, have we disposed of that earlier?
Yes.
So, regular session minutes for January the eleventh.
These are the ones we just received.
Uh, they were emailed out earlier today?
Yeah.
Okay, but just today, okay.
I was okay with the, the minutes as written. Would anybody else have a chance to review them or not?
On our discussion on the Lemaya property, I, I requested that we get in writing from the conservation commission their alleged support of this. Do we have that?
I have, I have a email to them.
We're still waiting. They had a meeting cancellation.
Okay.
But we're still waiting for that. We have been requesting to them.
They didn't, they haven't met since our last meeting.
Actually, remember when we went, I have a, under different...
Different minutes?
No, under different, that next thing on our agenda.
Other business?
Yes.
The, um, the settlement agreement with Holbrook Farm Estates, it says second read. The board reviewed and revised the settlement agreement. The town manager will coordinate execution, but did we vote on the agreement?
No, we didn't.
There was, no, there was no form of vote. It was the consensus of the board, I believe, to move forward with the changes.
But we would need a vote, wouldn't we?
I think it was that, that was over a hundred thousand dollars, so that vote went to town meeting. I think you already did that, right?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, because you had, anything over a hundred thousand dollars had to be authorized through town meeting vote for this, for you to, um...
No, you, they're talking about the settlement agreement.
Right.
And that was, the, the language on the settlement agreement.
Yeah, or do you want to approve the agreement or the, or the function of that?
They wanted to approve the actual agreement, and it, it, um, it was my mistake. If you wanted to see it again, I actually negotiated with the attorney for the changes he requested and executed the agreement. I thought that was the, the will of the board, but, uh...
All right, well, I agree.
It, I, you know, I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm clear that we were in agreement on it. I don't know if it, I know, I don't think we voted.
If you wanted to see it again, that's my mistake.
If we needed to vote, then we need to vote. If we did need to vote, I'm happy.
I think we need to vote, but I don't think it's an objection to the fact, there's nothing we can do, because it was, but I think that would have, okay. But we can't vote tonight because it's not on the agenda.
So we'll put it on the next agenda.
We'll put it on. My mistake, it was my, my understanding that, that I should move forward, but you're, you're correct. If it wasn't voted on, it should have, that should have happened first. They were amenable to the changes requested by the board.
Well, if we've got minutes documenting that we were in agreement with the language, and, and the agreement's already executed, does this vote, board need to reaffirm our previous statement that we agree with the language? What if we say we don't agree with the language? Well, it's already signed, it's already signed contract.
But it says the board reviewed and revised the settlement agreement.
Nice. The town manager will coordinate execution, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, we can leave it.
I did, it, it's my mistake if there was no final vote.
I, I walked out of the meeting thinking that you were going to take our changes, update the language.
And bring it back.
Oh, see, no, my understanding was, and if you can get agreement from, from their counsel to execute our language.
That's exactly what, that is exactly what happened.
Then I was okay with it, so...
Yeah, the trouble is, anyone reading this
Yeah, no.
Doesn't know that.
Yeah, I understand.
Then amend, amend the minutes. No, no, amend the minutes, not resolve the revision.
Yeah, yeah, you can, yeah.
We'll coordinate execution of, of the agreement if acceptable as revised.
Yeah, execution of agreement as revised. Of agreement as revised, okay. Yeah, thanks.
Because I, I didn't think we were going to take this up again after we walked out of that meeting. I thought we had consensus on the language and...
I, I did too.
Yeah.
And there's only so many times you can go back and revisit something. I mean, you get to move forward. So, motion to accept the minutes of January eleven as revised?
So moved.
Second.
Second? Move to second to the, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. February, do we have February eighth?
No, next, next time.
Okay. Um, did you all see the, the notice from Joe Deliso, that he's having another one of his meetings in Millbury?
Thursday.
Thursday at eight o'clock?
Who?
I'm out of town.
Who?
The Blackstone Valley Economic Development Council.
Oh. I didn't...
I, I sent it out late this afternoon to everybody.
Okay.
Reminding all the members of the eleven town group that he's doing this and that we had sent Senator Moore the letter regarding, um, conditional acceptance of moving the cherry sheet money to the Economic Development Council, and reminding the eleven towns that they really need to weigh in on it, positive or negative.
I've had a discussion with, what was the lady from Douglas?
Paul Brilat?
Yes, she called me and asked about it, and I, and she asked me to speak at the meeting. So my feeling is, it's, it's all well and good for the municipalities to step up to the plate, but this is a, is a partnership, and I think some of the private businesses also have to, uh, step forward and finance this, this endeavor. And she told me something interesting. We are the only group that's being financed with public money. Most of these chambers are being, economic development groups are being privately funded. So, I, I don't think it's bad that there's a private-public partnership, but it has to be a partnership.
You'll notice the, the moderator or leader this week is Hal Davis, and he's the one that's pushed that sort of forty-three Ds at, uh, business developments, um, entities, which we had suggested that South, South Uxbridge Business Association consider as a way of self-funding their infrastructure improvements.
That bids business improvement districts, yes.
Again, I find it interesting that we have two large business proposals coming into Uxbridge, and both of them have come in without this eleven-town economic development. I mean, I still believe that...
Government agencies do not bring any business anywhere.
I don't see us getting a bang for buck for this. It's, it's...
Once, once Joe Deliso is up and running, you'll see all sorts of things.
At a hundred thousand dollar a year salary that's funded on our tax dollar money. I'm sorry, I, I just, I don't think that we're going to get a benefit from it.
Well, we could get a few more blacksmith shops.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, lumber and ice establishments.
You've seen my revisions, you know that that will, will, I hope, be a thing of the past, that there will be a...
Also, have you spoken with Wickstrom and Lutton about what they're doing with that?
I haven't. Dr. Lutton has not been well lately.
Understood.
Mark had that other issue I, I'll put on, on the next agenda. I, I should have spoken to, to that in my manager's report of what he was requesting. I'll do it next time.
Oh, okay.
The special meetings for employee status. Since, we, I...
No, I need, I need to understand that better. We all need to understand it before we...
I'll get something written.
Talk about it, okay.
I'll, I'll provide some background documentation.
Okay. Final article, letter to Governor Patrick. I made some of the changes, I made the changes that everybody requested the last time.
I would just change the first paragraph, second line.
Oh, my God, this is the second time you've changed that.
It's, it's three words.
Okay.
Do you have... Uh, our colleague Kevin Kiroz, comma, pick out the words in light of.
Okay.
Because what, what you want to follow up on, his comments, some of the points he made of the State of the Commonwealth address in his speech. Just take the words in light of.
Okay.
Just to make it read better.
Comma, some of the points, okay, yeah, sure.
If you want to follow up on his comments and...
And his speech at the MMA. Okay, gotcha.
What's made in the speech.
Gotcha, mm-hmm.
What, what's the tax on nursing home residents?
That's, if, if you're paying your own way.
Yes.
You get levied the room tax by the state, whereas if you're on the dole, so it's a way of this, for the, for the state to get that last bit of your money
Yeah, okay.
When you're on your deathbed.
Okay, so I wasn't clear what, what it referred to here.
And remember, that, that was one of the things that, when Yehemcheck was running against Senator Moore.
Yeah.
That was one of his points that he kept raising.
Yeah.
Um, is, is saying Senator Moore being on the health subcommittee
Yeah.
Should have more sympathy for, for folks, and, and Moore kept dancing around that one.
Second page, third paragraph, last line, says leave towns increasingly unable to meet their minimal obligations. Should that be me, be minimum?
Wait, which page? I'm sorry.
Second page.
Second page.
Third paragraph, last line.
Okay, minimum?
It says minimal, yeah.
Okay.
I think you meant to say minimum.
Minimum, yeah.
And last paragraph, third line from the bottom, at the beginning, says, it says on staff, of, on, it should, should be or on.
Or on retainer.
On staff, or, or, on retainer, yeah, that should be an or.
And last page, last paragraph, it says leadership is needed from the top, sir. That sounds like something I would write, rather than something you would write.
Oh, thank you. I'm honored.
But usually, when I write those things, I say, gee, I shouldn't have said that.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm, I've been told by, that the governor tends to be kind of prickly at times.
Yeah.
Okay. As evidenced by the first paragraph.
So do you want to just drop that, or?
It's up to you. If it were me, I'd just leave out that word.
Your signature.
I thought you were going to co-sign.
I will co-sign.
I tried to tone it down and you put it back in, so...
Yeah, I thought it was taken out last time.
And on that, that vein, I, I didn't suggest you, you take this up, but I don't know if
You don't like Kabuki dance?
Should be capitalized.
Where was that? Which one? Which one?
I don't know if Kabuki dance should be capitalized.
Kabuki dance on Beacon Hill.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Sound and fury and posturing, and it's all just a big charade.
I, I think it should be...
I know, I think I like that.
I've had that for years and years.
I do like that. Both words then, right? Were you just saying dance?
Are we all going to sign or?
I'm taking the sir out again?
Yeah.
Do you want a motion?
Yes, please.
A motion to have the chair sign the February sixteenth. Can I change the date?
We're going to change the date, to whatever date.
February two thousand and ten, letter to Governor Patrick with recommended changes.
Second. Any further... Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Other new business?
Yes, please.
Regarding the ballpark proposal idea on Menon Street, could we have as, either the, the next time they want to come before us, or subsequent, right after that, if we could have a, kind of like a public hearing, allow the public to come forward and voice their opinion on that issue on an off night? It was recommended by a citizen who called me and felt that that would, you know, it was, it was an issue that he felt needed to be discussed outside of a regular BOS meeting for issues that.
Open to that, I mean.
Do you want a hearing or just a meeting? We have to put a legal notice in for.
Oh, I'm sorry, just a meeting, just for people to come forward and voice their concerns about the project.
Okay, so we need to get out some eye to people who are going to have this.
Right.
And let them know what the subject matter is.
Correct, right. And the recommendation also was that we actually go out and physically visit the site so that we all have an understanding of the dynamics, was what the citizen recommended before we had this meeting. That citizen had actually visited the site himself after our meeting.
It's part of that. I think we need to get that letter from the Conservation Commission. We also should nail down the issue whether that is conservation land or not, because according to what Steve O'Connell said, the deed doesn't say that. Now, I don't know if the deed has to say that, but in all the discussions that, that I'm aware of regarding the pulp-pon land, and that's part of the pulp-pon land, that it was turned over to the Conservation Commission. In fact, when it came, when we're talking about the pulp-pon property, remember the town meeting vote was to, we have to get special legislation to allow the rental of the conservation land. So, we need to resolve that issue.
And the citizen also recommended under that, that when we have it, if we invited members from conservation and recreation to the meeting also, so that the citizens had an opportunity to address questions and answers to members of the different boards that would be weighing in on this, instead of having to go to each of the boards' meetings, if we could kind of make it easier for the citizens to come in and have kind of a roundtable discussion, similar to what we do, you know, every once in a while, where we put school finance and BOS all together, something similar on this issue.
I'll have to search the title to see if there's any restrictions on the deed itself, and I'll see if I can identify anything. It's a little harder to go through town meeting votes since there isn't any, any objective records of town meeting votes, and that's something that Kelly has time on, that I have her prepare a book, and just shows what town meeting actions were taken and when. But that requires searching every warrant, but the title search should not be terribly difficult.
Can you do that from the office?
Before we even move to the point of having, having a joint meeting.
Access to them.
I'm with Peter, and I want to see recommendations from Conservation, because we're okay with this proposed use of this land, you know, so in conjunction with determining whether it does fall into the conservation area or not, and then sign off from Conservation Committee that they're okay with this. Everything else is almost a moot point. If it seemed to be under the control of the Conservation Commission, and they're not in favor of the action, then.
Right, right, I agree with you. Right, I just throw it out there as something that we should, you know, keep in the mind.
And if it isn't under their control, then they have nothing to do with it.
Right, right, right.
And that, that would account for all the pulp-pon land, because it was all one parcel.
Right.
Just one thing you know, you mentioned viewing the land. I would encourage anybody that it is still private property, so don't enter the land if you want to see it.
You have to go above.
Right, you have to go through, right, right, exactly, right, right.
Is it posted?
Actually, it's not posted, that's private property.
I'm sure there's a.
If it's not posted, then.
They've put a barrier up since the last time I was there.
Right, you can just go up on the ball field and.
Ball field is public land, yep.
And it isn't particularly safe, there's quite a bit of old equipment there, so.
Might be attacked by the old equipment.
Well, I mean.
I've heard of that, you know.
The old, attacked by the old bulldozer. Construction trucks.
I mean, you know, there's stuff to trip over, there are tripping hazards, if you have children there, it's inattractive to play on and perhaps get hurt on, it's, that's the turdian music in there.
You're not looking.
View it from the, from the ball field.
You're not looking at the existing gravel pit, you're looking at the gravel.
They want from us, yeah.
So, you go to the edge of the ball field and look down and see, you know, how many feet you're going to drop this thing, you know.
Right.
Any other things to discuss? Peter's usually.
Yeah, just a couple of things.
He just goes law book, that always makes me afraid.
It's, is my understanding correct that, again, we're going to take no real part in the budget process for this town meeting?
We'll take the budget.
Yeah, last year we took very active.
Yes, very active last year. I would anticipate the same thing this year.
When do we do that?
When they deliver those five budget books to us, right, Peter?
Okay, so, but, so we're not setting any priorities as to what we want, and I noticed that the, the proposed budget so far is for no money in the town school building maintenance account.
I, I understand what you're saying. I know it makes it more difficult for us to now say we want that, which.
Yeah.
Right, which.
The charter says the town manager prepares a budget in consultation with the board of selectmen.
Oh, we were kidding, we don't want our books.
Well, they are, your homework, Ben.
No, but I thought we asked not to get individual books.
Are we going to get those electronically this year?
Yeah. Yeah, I was going to pass out a couple of books this evening, and then what we did.
Twenty, how many did you make, eighteen?
Probably about, like, fifteen.
So, you see, I'm not impressed when the.
I thought we were only going to give one for the financing, we were going to share one.
Finance director moans and groans about the onerousness of his clerical burdens.
Actually, Tracy.
You did it?
Tracy did it.
But still, the point is that we're supposed to be there at the beginning, not at the end.
Right, I, I, I agree with you, Peter, because.
I mean, they literally just got finished up today. You want to.
You don't want one, I want an electronic copy.
Yeah.
I want electronic too.
What we have is by tomorrow afternoon, we'll have electronic copies available. Because we really don't have 16 books completed. If we need to, we would, but it's a lot of work.
Save the paper, save the papers.
Yeah, no, give us electronically.
Yeah, I will say too, I really appreciate.
I'll take, Mike will take the old one.
Mike will take our copy.
But I really do appreciate the effort you've made in the last couple of weeks to scan the reading file.
Yes.
That's been tremendously helpful to get that.
I agree.
By email, as opposed to having to come in to hit the file, so I really appreciate that, and hope we continue that practice.
I agree.
So, by tomorrow, there'll be a thumb drive available for you if you want electronic copy, and what will happen, it's just too big to email.
Right.
So, you'll get a thumb drive with, with the whole book, and then thereafter, if a budget is updated, it's, it'll be small enough to email it to you.
Just updates.
Drop it on your thumb drive, bring your laptops in, use the thumb drive, the laptop at the meeting.
Okay.
We're trying to get a loaner laptop from the board to help, so if anybody needs a laptop, we can see if we can find another one kicking around to use if you want an electronic copy of the budget, and you want to look at it at the meeting, so.
Oh, okay.
So, instead of having a hard copy, you'll have a thumb drive.
It's a laptop, it's not a little handheld thingy that you can't.
They put the hide behind.
Peter's still running DOS at home though, right, so.
That's right.
In Windows.
We can walk you through it, though.
I run DOS on my Aptiva. I be an Apt.
Okay, the, the other.
Okay, but on your, on your point of that, though, but, I mean, just so I understand the process, I mean, the town manager has provided his budget, we have to do the department budgets, but if we wanted to, let's say, take $5,000, I mean, I'm just pulling an arbitrary number, but if we wanted to take $5,000 from every department and put it over into a school building maintenance account so that we start building that.
It's harder to do. Once every department has already been told, this is what.
Your figure is, right.
Yeah.
Well, this budget is a conservative budget. We've minimized, we've taken the lowest reasonable figures for revenues, and the increases for costs are, have been fairly liberal in the sense we've forecasted at the top end. It is a conservative budget, so we are hoping that there'll be some additional revenues available.
From where?
Simply from, as projections come in, for example, initially, we had projected higher health insurance costs than ultimately we saw. As we get better and better estimates as, as time goes forward, if things are looking better than we thought and money becomes available, that will be, then there will be decisions to be made. If there's 50 or 80,000 dollars available, you know, what you want to dedicate that to, be it the school town building maintenance fund, be it a capital project, something along those lines.
Okay, so we're not getting hit with the, on average, 34% increase on health insurance, like the state of California?
No, not 34%.
Thirty-three.
We're looking at about 10% for Blue Cross Blue Shield and about.
Was it 18%?
It's down, I think, to 14% on Fallon. Unfortunately, the school department disproportionately has Fallon, so that's hitting them harder than the town side. We tend to have more Blue Cross.
Hopefully, they'll switch over, because they don't want to pay.
I hope they would.
But I would have thought an HMO would be cheaper than a.
They're both HMOs.
They're both HMOs.
They're both HMOs, okay.
Initially, they came in at 22%, and David and I considered, or I considered, David said, you can't do that, but you can do that, simply eliminating Fallon and going to impact bargaining. I mean, we can change health insurance if we need to, but the requirement is, under mass, mass law, that we then impact bargain, but.
Well, the school committee's up for re-contract this year.
But what's the impact of giving someone cheaper health insurance that has the same benefits? And, you know, if Fallon is, continues to be above the average, we may end up doing that, simply eliminating it and impact bargaining with the unions. Because there is no, I mean, the impact is you get cheaper health insurance, we don't have to pay you for that. I don't like doing it. I mean, I like to cooperate with the unions, but sometimes it's necessary. I've only done that once in my whole career, and it wasn't, obviously, there was a prohibitive practice charge levied, but it was settled.
Do we offer HMO Blue New England or HMO Blue Mass to our employees?
No, there's a difference.
Yes. Unless, unless, unless it is all New England now, but there used to be a difference where if you were HMO Mass, then you were only using networking in Mass, but if you get HMO New England.
I think it's Mass.
Then it's the whole, it's all the New England states, so like.
No, it's just Massachusetts.
Okay, because there is, okay.
It's a Massachusetts plan.
Okay.
Same, same plan that's offered through Maya, which is Massachusetts only. I don't know, Fallon is wider in scope. We do offer a PPO for people that want to go out of state, it's more expensive, it tends to be picked up by retirees, especially retirees in, in public safety or the school department that have the ability to retire before they're 65 and are non-eligible for Medicare.
The other thing we may want to look at, you know, in doing that, is, we'll look to see if the New England is cheaper than the PPO for Blue Cross, but also, like, my father's a, he gets his retirement from one of the other cities here in Massachusetts with his insurance, and if he leaves the state of Massachusetts, he doesn't get his insurance anymore.
I've asked David to look into other options, including the Maya plan through, through the MMA. We looked at it last year, it wasn't to our benefit, but we'll look at it every year. We revisit all of these plans every year. Typically, it's, it's very difficult to get out of a Blue Cross option, because that's been one of the stumbling blocks with the GIC, they don't offer Blue Cross Blue Shield, and that has been a big problem for communities to migrate on there.
I had about a 20-minute conversation with an executive from Blue Cross Blue Shield at the MMA conference, and it looks like it's not even on their radar screen as far as joining the GIC and offering, so, you know, that's, they do, I think, a three-year planning window as far as those types of decisions.
Is there a reason?
Business decision.
It's not cost-effective for them.
They'll make less money on that than offering traditional plans that people find attractive, and unions are already locked into.
Yeah. Blue Cross does, and I've spoken to them about it, they don't offer $5 copays in the private sector, and.
And nobody should.
They simply stopped offering them. We would not be required to offer, we're not required to offer insurance plans that aren't available, but they continue to offer those $5 copays, and it's not in their interest and it's not in our interest.
Five-dollar copays.
Five-dollar copays.
So crazy.
Okay, other issue.
I don't have.
I think at our last meeting, I touched on the, the zoning board's decision regarding the rodeo, where they, they resurrected and expired pre-existing non-conforming use. Now, keep in mind, it was agriculture, the owner wanted it changed to industrial, so the owner's own action made it a non, you know, non-allowed use. Now he wants it resurrected. The ZBA gave them, they resurrected that and gave them a special permit. I don't have the decision yet, I guess it's still not written up, but there are rules regarding the authority of a ZBA to grant extensions and changes in a pre-existing non-conforming uses, even though that two-year window has lapsed, they've resurrected it and are enormously increasing it. The basic guidelines under state law, whether the use reflects the nature and purpose of the use prevailing when the zoning bylaw took effect, two, whether there is a difference in the quality or character as well as the degree of use, and three, whether the current use is different in kind in its effect on the neighborhood. Now, the pre-existing use was a golf driving range, had maybe five or six people at a time hitting golf balls, not a lot of traffic, not a lot of noise, and so forth. This, this is the guru's book, by the way, Bombowski's book about zoning, and basically, it's $80 I paid for this stupid book. It's basically a reprint of state law and some other things, but there's also a table on, on court cases touching the, the issue of making a non-allowed use, but pre-existing, but they want to change it, you see? Now, keep in mind, the town of Exbridge, when it changed its zoning bylaw, has determined that any outside commercial recreation is not allowed. That means by definition, any outdoor commercial recreation is a detrimental use. Now, you say, well, that's crazy. Yes, it is crazy, but it's also the law in Exbridge, and we're bound by that law. So, here's a case where someone wanted a pre-existing, limited to, limited general motor vehicle repair, limited motor vehicle repair to general repair, that was not allowed by the courts. A new building in an existing gravel pit, not allowed. Tailored to a dry cleaner, not allowed. Small to a larger gravel pit, not allowed. New building at Slaughter House, not allowed. Ice plant to a fuel oil facility, not allowed. Ice plant to a fuel oil facility, not allowed. Dance hall to a restaurant, no, not allowed. New building at a piggery, not allowed. There's already a piggery, the guy wants to put up a new building, not allowed. Gravel pit using improved methods from hand shoveling to machinery, that's allowed by the courts. New building at gas station slash store, no, not allowed. Grocery to a drugstore, not allowed. So, and most of these things, not been allowed, so the rules are very strict. So, it's unfathomable to me how the ZBA came to the point where they allowed that change, and the implications for the future in the town of Uxbridge are enormous. I would appeal their decision, except I don't have standing. And as far as I can see, you need to have standing to appeal a ZBA grant of a special permit, but the Board of Selectmen could appeal it. And I think if we have any sense and want to preserve the use of zoning in the town of Uxbridge, that we should do that. It's a terrible, terrible decision.
I mean, I, because it's not on the agenda, I don't feel it's right to discuss it now, but one thing...
But we can discuss anything on the agenda. We can vote.
Okay.
But we can discuss anything we want.
Well, here's something we're thinking of. You made the statement that it was, you know, it's not detriment, I mean, that it is detrimental. I mean...
By definition. That's what zoning, zoning determines which use is a good and bad and so forth.
So, you're saying it's detrimental because, according to the readings in that book?
No, 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 no. Our bylaw prohibits...
I understand that, but our bylaw is also going to be back on the Springtown meeting as being changed, so as possibly, hopefully, by the end of May, we'll have different bylaws where it may not be.
Well, that's true, and I would be in favor of that. There's no reason, as far as I'm concerned, to say that you can't have outdoor recreation in an industrial zone. It doesn't make sense.
Right, it does make sense.
But that's the law.
Okay, so, is your position because of how it is now, and would you have that same position on May thirtieth?
No, on May thirtieth, if we change the bylaw, I'd say fantastic, but this decision, if allowed to stand, sets a precedence as to how the ZBA needs to look at other requests of a similar nature. Keep in mind now, the pre-existing non-conforming use expired.
I understand.
Gone. Years later, after the owner has stopped that use, asked that the town change the zoning from agriculture to industrial, and his complaint now is, gee, this use isn't allowed in this zone. Well, dummy, you asked for it to be changed. But even if it was somebody else who asked that it be changed, it wouldn't make any difference. So, what's the ZBA going to do if somebody has a little mom-and-pop store and they want to enlarge it, you know, fifty times? Are they going to say no, when they're on record as having said, "Okay, you can go from six people hitting golf balls to this whole list of activities that are going to be hundred times greater in traffic and noise and all the other things that people might find objectionable in a different context"?
But how much weight does a prior ZBA decision have on the ZBA's ability to render subsequent independent decisions?
There's an issue that a person who's unhappy can say, "Your decision is arbitrary and capricious," because here are the facts in that case, and this is what your ruling is, you went from this to this, I'm asking to go from this to this, and you're telling me no.
But that appeal would have to be made in the courts, right?
Yes.
Right.
And they'd probably prevail. That's my concern. Nothing's going to happen between now and May. I mean, they're not going to build this rodeo in two months or three months. I don't know why they went that route, but it's bad for the town and bad for zoning. You think I'm against government? I'm not against government. I'm against stupid and ignorant government, and this is a prime example of that.
Well, when they were before us, we had brought to their attention that there was a Springtown meeting or the potential for this special.
Yeah, and they didn't want to wait.
And they, right, because of financing. So, I think that that's probably why they used, took this route. Now, unfortunately...
I'm sure they had a reason, but I work for the people of Uxbridge. I don't work for the...
No, no, I understand that.
Or the developer.
I mean, I'm not saying that, the argument that you're providing, Peter, doesn't possibly have merit. It's just, I'm looking at, you know, I understand the point that you're bringing, and what's the chance that this will come back to bite us, and is that more detrimental than appealing this, this business got coming to town, and is that more detrimental to us than something over here that may not happen?
No.
I mean, because I see this as a foot, that particular, you know, when you say, "What's Uxbridge's vision in fifteen, twenty years?", to me, I see this as a big opportunity for Uxbridge to put itself on the map. It's kind of like, you know, the, we are sitting in a prime location for recreational entertainment for the state of Massachusetts. The amount of money that people dump into recreational pastimes is unbelievable, and here we are, sitting on a perfect corridor with four ninety-five and one forty-six and our proximity to the New England states for a, like the gentleman said when he was in here, it's like, you know, you have a fairgrounds, there was a winery just close to here, you know, if, you know, this motocross park goes in, I mean, we could actually have the potential for growth of restaurants and, you know, these deluxe campgrounds, there was one in Rhode Island, there's one in Foxborough, that are huge attractions, people come from all over to go to these places. We're sitting in a prime area that doesn't necessarily affect our downtown or our residential area because it's out at our highway, but it brings resources into our town. You know, I understand what you make the point about, you know, wealth, creating wealth. This is a different form of wealth, a recreational wealth, that we could capitalize on as a town, and by having a business like this come to town is the first, is the first footstep. A town for you to look at is a town, Brazelton, Georgia. They took a little old winery, and now they have a, the family up there put in a winery, then they put in a racetrack, they do Formula One racing, then they built a strip mall, and, I mean, it's taken off. Little town of Brazelton's population and wealth has grown tremendously in the last ten years, and it's right next to the highway, and it, you know, it's contained, but it's made the town wealthy and it, without affecting some of the other areas.
You're mixing two different things. What Peter is arguing is that the ZBA ruling is a bad precedent, that will do bad things in the future.
I don't, it may.
The rodeo thing could go in under any number of other ways, other than this. So, the idea of appealing a bad decision that creates a bad precedent does not close the door on that particular group coming in and building their rodeo thing in South Uxbridge.
It may, if the ZBA's, if we appeal the ZBA's decision.
Hmm.
Okay, and therefore, and let's say, all intent purposes, the ZBA's decision is overturned, the ball rolling on the rodeo could be stopped. You know, their finances may, could potentially pull out. What I'm saying is, we don't know the whole impact of that because we don't know why they felt like they had to take the avenue they had.
You create a situation of doing perpetual damage all over the town, just to allow one thing to stand in a remote part of town. That precedent could then be applied any number of places in town, maybe not in the historic district, but outside of the historic district, there are any number of old usages that could be dredged up, and this precedent would allow them to stand.
I mean, United States of America might have been a bed and breakfast in the turn of the century, okay, and all of a sudden, they're going to cite this and say, "You know what? I want to open up a bed and breakfast," so you're going to have all the traffic and all the cars and people coming and going and crowds, all that kind of stuff, next door to your home. You know, I mean, that's the potential.
Right, no, and I understand, right, and that's all I'm saying, which is, you know, I'm not saying that his argument doesn't have merit. All I'm saying is, you know, we have to consider both sides, that by, if we give more weight to overturning this precedent, there is a chance that there could be an impact on that business, and we may choose that it's worth rolling the dice and taking that gamble. All I'm saying is, you can't assume that you're still going to get the rotary if you all, the rodeo if you still do it.
What's our job? What's our job?
To take it, the interest of the town.
Our job is not, yes, yes, absolutely.
Looking at what is best for the town.
Work for the taxpayers, work for the people of Uxbridge, in long-term interest.
I know.
And we've had a hundred proposals come and go. You want to bring out those nice shiny brochures that Louis Tosino gave us?
I absolutely agree.
With a great assurance that we're going to have this big shopping center, remember all those nice, where is it?
It's coming.
Coming, yeah.
Right.
At a theater near you.
I know, but on that point, right, I didn't make the decision expecting that to come. I made that decision based on what we were going to get at the time. So, I understand what you're saying, and that's what we're weighing here. You know, I didn't make the decision on the power plant expecting the power plant to get built at that moment. I was looking at how it was going to have an impact.
Well, I mean, there is nothing to weigh, there's no balance here. A bad decision is a bad decision, and I don't like bad decisions. I want good decisions.
I don't either. Right, and we've made plenty of bad ones, BJ's, to me, was a very bad decision, especially when they got their abatement this last year, you know?
The point, though, Jake's and his people came before us, we told them what the issue was, we told them all the ways that they could resolve it, you know, going to town meeting, having, there were any number of ways they could have done it without doing it this way, a way that potentially harms a whole lot of different places.
Do we know how they came up with this idea?
I have no idea.
Well, remember, Steve O'Connell is on the ZBA, right? And wasn't he one of the ones that proposed the thing? Wasn't he there? No? I thought he was. No? Okay. But he'll be the engineer, I'm sure, designing some of this stuff, same way with the others and the other thing. I don't know. It's just incomprehensible to me that for the possibility we might have some honky-donk thing, that we're going to allow a horrendous, horrible, horrible decision to stand.
Then let me, what's the procedure?
It's going to come back to bite us.
I mean, because if you're, if we have standing, is, you know...
We just file an appeal.
I understand that, but is there a timeframe involved in it?
Yes, we have to file it within twenty days of the, or maybe ten days.
Twenty.
Twenty.
Because I was going to say...
Of the time the decision is given to the town clerk.
And when was the decision given to the town clerk?
Once we do that, it hasn't been yet. Once we do that, everything comes to a standstill, and probably at that point, they will say, "Hey, listen, we'll try to change the bylaw. You know, we got a town meeting coming up in May, early May. Why not? It makes perfect sense."
Well, if this is something we're going to entertain, in all fairness, we just opened a special town meeting, call these guys and say, "You have until Monday to get a hundred signatures to get on the special town..."
They don't need a hundred signatures. We could put it on the warrant.
Okay, then we could put it on the warrant for the special town meeting, and then we can appeal that decision and give an opportunity to change the...
I'm not sure I'd like to use the special town meeting for that purpose, because, as I said earlier, you know, I would like to discourage additional items, otherwise, they're going to come in out of the woodwork.
But getting a hundred signatures or without us putting it on, I don't see coming out of the woodwork. This, to me, I see that as a possible win-win situation. Here, we are preserving our, you know, our zoning into the future, but yet also rectifying the situation that we're, you know, ultimately putting the kibosh on temporarily by allowing at least, at minimum, a thirty-day hold.
We have the...
And then we're giving it to the citizens to decide also.
The old grain store, right? That's a business, it's in a residential use, it's a pre-existing non-conforming. So, under the ZBA scenario, someone could buy that building and say they want to resurrect the pre-existing non-conforming status, but they want to make it much, much larger. They'll do what was proposed at the town meeting, buy that land behind it and put a strip mall in there.
Make it over. There was a nice little strip mall.
And if you look at their decision, they'd be hard-pressed to say no. I mean, it's not, it's not a theoretical thing, that the bad things can happen.
Right, and I'm not saying I disagree with you, but I don't underst, I mean, I think that providing this business an opportunity to get on the special town warrant and appealing the ZBA decision is the way that we should proceed with this.
Well, I think it's a courtesy to the potential business owner that if we are going to appeal this, and we, and obviously, we'll need to take it up at our next meeting, or actually, we can't even take it up until it's filed with the clerks, but that we reach out to that business right away and let them know that it's something that we are considering, and that here are your other options that you may choose to implement to still get to the same end game.
Right.
Without compromising the town's ability to enforce zoning.
Yeah, that's a good way of approaching it.
And that's a reasonable...
Again, I have nothing against the gentleman. You know, I think it's foolish to say that you can't have in an industrial zone any outdoor recreation. It just doesn't make sense to me, but that's what the law is. That's why it's so important to read and completely understand zoning bylaws before we vote on them.
So, even if we don't, not able to act on this at the special town meeting, because I agree that...
May is around the corner.
Yeah, I mean...
May is around the corner. I know how these things work. Nothing is going to happen, and, you know, as far as I'm concerned, we should tell them flat out that it's not, you know, prejudicial...
It's not against them.
Against their concept of what they want to do, it's simply and plainly, it's not in conformance with the present zoning bylaws.
I think we're naive to think, though, that it will be resolved at the May town meeting. I think that that's where we would be in our best interest to afford them the opportunity of, you know, knowing about the special town meeting.
Well, so, let them do it. Let them do it. Okay, the only other thing, I happened to hear Charlie Baker, he was on that night program that, on radio, Haweika, only it wasn't Haweika, it was somebody else, and a caller from Worcester asked him if he was going to do something about the prevailing wage law, and he sidestepped the issue.
Of course.
I mean, he said, "Well, you know, that's really not an executive decision, and I'm rather concerned on some other things and so forth." You know, if I had a choice between an honest-to-goodness, wacko liberal Democrat and a spineless, gutless, off-and-on Republican conservative, I'd take the honest...
I'm not conservative, but...
Well, yeah. I'd take the honest, wacko liberal.
Are you, are you promoting Arthur Dubois for governor?
I just take out the wacko part from Arthur, out of deference to my personal relationship.
Can I just raise something?
Cool.
Just informational more than anything else. Been doing some research, as you all may imagine, on the eighth Worcester district and the five towns in that district, and specifically was looking at, kind of, where do those towns stand relative to each other as far as the financial situations? Four of the five towns are within point one or lower percent of their levy limit. Okay, so, so four of the five towns are taxing right up to the max of their levy limit, which is, I guess, somewhat of a statement of the times and not necessarily reflection on any one individual town, and looking through the table that I was looking at, there were many, many, many towns across the Commonwealth who are... across the Commonwealth who are right at their levy limits. I don't, for a second, think that that's a good thing. I just make an observation as to, you know, we're not alone as far as when we hear that. The towns that were not at their levy limit, actually, most of them were not towns. They were cities with, you know, tremendous amount of, you know, commercial assets and those type of things that, you know, if they wanted, they could raise their levy limit considerably more. But so we're on relative same footing as the other towns. What's interesting, though, is relative to new growth. Of the five towns, there's Douglas, Dudley, Uxbridge, Webster, and Oxford are in the district. We are the third-largest town. Oxford is bigger, and Webster is bigger. We've had the most new growth in addition to our levy limit over the last two years. We've had about $1,000... Yeah, $1,000 worth of new growth of those five towns.
When you say largest, you mean population or land base?
Yes, yeah, population, yeah. Yeah, Webster's like 17, Oxford's like 13, we're 12 and change. And Dudley and Douglas are much smaller. But by a fair amount, actually, we've had the largest new growth as far as, you know, that gets reported to us by Desaster over the last two years.
But that's not... You said population. It's not population. It's growth in physical buildings and so forth.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
No, 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 I meant when he... She... He was saying the size of the towns. I was asking population.
Yes.
Right.
But he's...
No, no, he's not talking population.
What Desaster reports. The new growth, you know, the 2.5% plus new growth.
Right.
Our... The plus-new growth has been bigger in Uxbridge over the last two years than any other four towns in the district, which surprised me, given that...
Yeah, where is it?
Yeah, I know, but...
Fortunately, more fortunately, however you view it, most of the new growth has been in residential real estate. And that tends to carry its own costs with it. Because, you know, people move into new houses.
Have kids and educate them, yeah. No, I understand.
They tend to enter the school systems and... At least in my analysis, it's about 15 to 20 years before a new residential property actually has a positive benefit on the town's economic situation.
Well, my son has a house in Sudbury. His taxes are $35,000 a year. And the house has been empty for two years, and he's in California.
He has a pretty big house.
So it's not always...
It's not always, but this is in Sudbury.
There are a lot of see-through houses in the town of Uxbridge and other towns, too.
Those are just two numbers that just kind of jumped out at me as I was doing my analysis.
The problem we have, New England as a whole, is we have a lot of detriments to us. Because of the frost in the winter, it costs more to build and maintain roads, much more than it does down south. Because of the snow and the frost and the cold, you... Houses have to be built stronger, which means they're more expensive to carry the snow load and so forth. All these things add to the cost of doing business in the Northeast. When you couple with that the increased friction added by government, I mean, it's an insurmountable burden. I read somewhere where... We're talking about photocells here, solar panels. The state gave a, what, a $5 million grant to some company to start manufacturing solar panels.
It was $70 million to Evergreen Solar.
$70 million, okay.
And they were moving to China.
Yes. Now, people say, "Oh, we're getting the money, they moved to China." If they didn't go to China, they'd be out of business. It's as simple and plain as that. And we, you know, we can't do anything about the snow and the cold or the frost. So we have to, to compete, we have to do something in other areas. And we're not doing things in the other areas.
That's all I had. I just wanted to share those two stats.
Anything else, or can we get a motion to adjourn? Peter, you have it.
No.
Nope. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, my God, it's before 10 o'clock.